Thank you for being with us for this special meeting of Commissioners Court. We do have a quorum, but before we get started, would like to open with prayer and then we'll get moving with it. So if you would, please rise.
We're going to do the pledges.
And pledges as well. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for this past week. It has been troublesome. It has been burdensome. But Father, you have been with us through this. Father, we ask that you continue to be with those that have been impacted, the ones that are without home and hurting and need shelter. And Father, we ask you to be with the ones that continue to respond to help. We thank them for their service, for what they do for us. Father, we do appreciate the rain, but we know that everything's in your will, but we ask, Lord, for a little break. Father, if you would, please be with this court today as we do the county's business, and please forgive us of our sins. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Well, the time is 10:02. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing that we have none, we'll move to item one, which is consider and take action on extension of disaster declaration for Henderson County. And Court, as you know, on May 24th, we were impacted in the precinct four area, Coffee City area, with a EF1 tornado that instigated the declaration. We know that we have had continuing storms since then with the continued cleanup process responsibility. Most of you, as I've heard this morning, were out last night even, continuing to pick up brush. I would like to call our emergency management coordinator, Jane Rindberg, up to discuss this declaration. We are at the seven days. We passed, or we issued the declaration originally on May 24th at about 10 o'clock at night. So it is good for seven days, and we're closing in on that time, and where the court has to take action to continue the declaration or a ratification, in other words thereof. So Jane, what's been going on? And talk about what you feel we need doing.
Well, so you've already stated, we had the tornado event, and since the tornado event, we've had several other events. I believe every precinct in Henderson County has been impacted in some form or fashion since last Friday, just from the various storms. So, you know, Friday, we decided to get with you and see if we could get this disaster declaration done. And like you said, the judge can sign it for seven days, but beyond seven days, the Commissioners Court has to approve for it to continue on. It's my understanding we don't have to set a time limit on that disaster declaration. Once the court just approves for it to go on, then the judge can remove it anytime he sees fit. We are currently under a state declaration as well from the governor.
As this, 30 days, of course, is our limitation.
Yes.
That we have to. This particular one, as it is written now, says 14 days. That is completely up to the court in what we believe will be happening. 14 days is basically what we had in place in an instant previously, and that's something that the court can decide here today, what that length would be. So I'm sorry.
And we can all, and the court can also extend it.
Right.
Some of that period. But basically, this just allows us to go about the process of helping everybody in the county. We have been pushing the I-STAT forms throughout. I'm sure everybody has seen that. This is going to get the public some assistance. Us getting, being in this declaration is part of that. We, I believe, had somewhere around 50 or 60 I-STATs alone, just in precinct four. And we have already set up a site for FEMA to come to Henderson County to physically meet with some of your constituents out there and try to get them some help. So really, this disaster declaration does a lot of things. It doesn't, not only does it open us up for assistance, the county, but the individuals out there, as well as been affected by the storm.
I believe, what is our threshold dollar amount as far as being eligible to then receive the federal designation and reimbursement capabilities? It's 260?
We're 360s.
360?
I think it's 360 or 361, which I believe, you know, we're going to be able to meet because obviously, we can use TVAG and Encore and what they're having to go through. You know, the county alone is spending quite a bit of money trying to get this taken care of. The threshold, I believe, is going to be met fairly easily. There is thresholds for individual assistance, and then there's thresholds for PAs, for public assistance, which would be governments. We typically meet the individual assistance one, but we don't typically meet the public assistance one. However, in this event, we definitely are going to meet it because I think it's somewhere around 38, I believe it's 38 homes that were either destroyed or severely damaged to the point to where they can be considered destroyed. So, and I believe the threshold is only five for individual assistance and maybe eight for public assistance, somewhere around there.
Do, once we meet that threshold of 361, do we get to claim all the 361, or does it start from 361 and go forward?
So we can claim, we can claim everything. We, that's where our documentation comes into effect. And I know that y'all have, you know, we've been preaching ever since this started, FEMA now is if it doesn't have a picture attached to it, it didn't happen. So we have to document every single thing we do because we are going to use all of that at the end to show what we've had to spend on this. And part of the declaration is us saying, hey, we're beyond our means. We're spending way more than our, you know, just little basket over here that we set aside. We're having to do a whole lot just to get the community back up and running.
What I'm saying is, is we can still collect the 361?
Yes.
I can't, I hope so. I mean, I tell, you know, the cities that are declaring, because they're asking the same questions, well, can, are you sure we're going to be able to do this? We're going to be able to do that? I don't know. It's up to FEMA, what they give us and what they don't give us, and we're doing everything and working with the auditor's office to keep all of the documentation together. All I can promise you is that if we don't have a disaster declaration and we don't keep up with this, we will get nothing.
And Marie, would you like to go into some of the, along that same line with what y'all are having to do?
It's going to be a lot for our office, but it will be made much, much easier if y'all do the work upfront. We need pictures. Like I said the other night, when it's the middle of the night, we still need the middle of the night pictures. Even if it's black, we can say, you know, show them time and date, say, if we went out there in the middle of the night, took pictures, I know you can't see it, but this is what it looked like the next morning. We need accurate time on your employees. Please put in the spreadsheet and in the time on STW correctly. It's just really important that y'all pay attention to the details on your end. Otherwise, we're chasing our tails on our end.
Do we ever receive, have we ever received any money from FEMA?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, over the years, we really have.
But I mean, it seems like they just want more and more and more.
They do.
And I mean, you got guys out there that are exhausted. It's 10:30, 11, 12 o'clock at night. They've worked all day long. They go home, they don't even get supper, and we call them out to cut trees down. The last thing they're thinking about is taking a picture.
Yeah.
And I know, we try to tell them, but, and then they get back, did you get a picture? I forgot. Well, what are you going to do? I mean, what are you going to get on to them? Because they come out at 1:00 in the morning, they got up out of bed, and you going to get mad at them because they didn't take a picture?
Well, those guys that came to work on our house Saturday, we were like the last house they got out before everything crashed again, and they had been working 39 hours straight.
I know.
And that's, that can even be safe. I mean...
I mean, they don't understand that we don't, a lot of those, a lot of those companies, bigger companies, they got somebody in a car following these guys around that don't do dump but take pictures.
Our guys do. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we, our guys getting in a dump truck with a backhoe, and the last thing they're thinking about, they unloaded that backhoe at the tree. They ain't even thought about taking a picture.
Right.
And they went in numbers Tuesday, and I called Phillip and kind of vented, you don't have time for numbers. We're in the middle of crisis.
And then it wants time stamped pictures and date stamped pictures. And all my guys, you know, they don't all have that on their phones.
Right.
I mean, you got to have that out to time, date, and, don't you? To date.
The phone should do it. It's a setting on the phone.
But...
It, it...
I know. And that's just, that's just me griping. I know that ain't y'all, but that's them. It's just building a bigger and bigger and bigger bureaucracy of somebody that's, because they're thinking about that guy that's following them around taking pictures. But we don't have that guy.
It's the same thing as a lot of other things we get into where we get tied up in legislation on the laws they make. We don't have the resources here to these big cities and big, high population counties, guy, and have somebody that can sit there and rest until the disaster happens.
Yeah.
And then use them to go take pictures. Same thing, you know, just, they shouldn't not say give us, make it easier on us, but they know we don't have the resources. And last time we had FEMA, they sent representatives out to do all this stuff. Had somebody came here and stayed two months when we had the rainstorms in 15 and 16, well, now they want you to do it all.
Yeah. And two years ago, the ice storm that we got brought into, what was the accounting firm that?
Ernst &amp; Young.
Ernst &amp; Young?
We're still waiting on that one from February 2023. It's in full review.
Yeah. But you now, they now use accountants to do this, and I pick on attorneys a lot. No, I pick on accountants. That's what they know, and that's, that's the problem. We're trying to respond and get roads open and get people taken care of, and it's...
And I know we got to have it. We got to do the declaration, and I ain't griping about that. I'm just preaching to the choir.
Well, I mean, one of the complications Sheriff's Department had, some the same. I mean, how many people did we have involved out at, you know, Coffee City tornado from yours, you know, your group?
It was a large number of our folks.
Right.
You know, and the main thing, we care, but get a lot of roads in there that are dead end and it's one way in and one way out. They're just trying to get trees moved out of the way so emergency services can get in there in case there's somebody injured.
Mm-hmm.
Time to sit there and take five pictures of a tree laid across the road.
Right.
If you know, and mill the art with pour down rain.
Yeah. Well, there's things, you know, we discussed this a couple of months ago about starting looking at, because of the requirements of FEMA and them on this documentation of going to contract type services, which we'll be getting into that in the future. But it gets more and more so that if we are going to get those type of reimbursements, probably about the only thing we can do.
That, that, that you're saying right there about a contract, which would be great on something like Briarwood. They could come in and clean that area up, take care of it. But generally, and we know just from the weather patterns, when one of them moves in, it usually, the next two weeks, every time it rains, every time the wind blows, we got trees down everywhere. And, you know, one of those wouldn't be any good for that because we're getting called out in the middle of the night.
Right.
But on, on one, on a central location like Briarwood or High Saw or down in there, I mean, something like that'd be great to have somebody that would clean that mess up.
Right.
And then we could get on other stuff.
It's, it's not the opening of the road that's the issue.
Yeah.
It's the cleaning up afterward, and that's where things...
We got all the roads open right now.
Right.
But we got a month.
Of hauling off.
Of hauling stuff off. Because, I mean, they don't understand, you know, one of them will be, I cut one down last night that was four foot around, the fire department did, down at Briar. I don't know, I didn't even think they had a saw big enough. But somebody did. We do, but I didn't think they did. And, and that tree will take eight, so eight, maybe dump truck loads. And each truck be gone, maybe, you know, an hour by the time they leave and go dump and then get, get back.
Right.
So, I mean, you're talking about one tree, take all day with five men, four dump trucks and a backhoe operator. Took all day. That's one tree. We got hundreds down right now.
Yeah.
And you got a 30-foot right away that you don't have a place to put it, and there are bins on both sides, and you got a path wide enough for a car to go through, and they expect us to leave it there and decide how we're going to dispose of it.
Right. That's another added complication to it, and that's why I go back to that discussion when you're talking about, we can clear the roads. It's everything after that that we ought to...
Take it some more time.
Yeah. I mean, it, it takes, it's the lost productivity, productivity and what we've spent.
Rid of the last, since, since the snowstorm.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, we don't keep up with it. We probably should, just so we would know. But it's unbelievable the amount of time we spend on trees that we haven't spent on roadway.
Right.
We're not even in the day before you put it out there right now.
Y'all get it?
The breaks into the choir.
I like to say, "Oh, rock the prayer."
I think I have twelve, twelve for us.
And there's clean up.
Yeah. And then there's the assistance for the municipalities, these small municipalities involved in it. You know, the Sunday event that came in from nowhere was, you know, Malakoff, where?
Lock Haven, County City, Star Harbor, and Key Ranch. And we're still working on that.
Yeah.
And we had four more this morning, all down. And we had flooding last night. We had to go out, put barricades up.
Yeah.
We've been getting a lot of...
Which, I mean, we all know that's something we got to do, but it's just, man, since, since 21, it seems like it's just been unbelievable.
Yeah.
Just because we got so many dead trees along with all of this normal storm weather that we always have.
Right.
And dead trees don't follow the storm.
No, they don't. Well, given what we've been through, and, go ahead.
Do we got, what we need to decide if we want to do 14 days or 30 days?
Whatever the pleasure the court is. If you want to do 14 or 30.
It's going to take us over 30 to clean up what all we got.
Okay.
That's true.
And be, and do, you know, the other stuff we got to do along with it.
Okay.
But I know it's going to take you.
I mean, you know, I'd say a lot of ours, a lot of us in the city, leaving some coffee city, but they, like I say, they don't have any resources either.
Right.
They depend on us. And it's like, a lot of these cities, they want to be cities, but when something happens, they keep doing it.
Yeah. Well, this whole span, there's so many people that, you know, we owe a great debt of gratitude to, you know, Sheriff's Department's done their job, emergency management theirs, our road crews.
And so the fire departments.
Fire, exactly.
I mean, they've been tremendous. And I hope you, I stopped by Briarborough last night and told them guys thanks. Tell them that we appreciate it with what they're doing. I mean, I don't know if all of them are, but the ones in my area, most of them, they're working overtime too.
They all are. All, all over the county, they're, they're all answering the calls and doing what they need to do.
And, you know, we had great support from UT Health with, you know, they had individuals, they moved ambulances around that we needed them. They offered the opportunity to go up in a helicopter to view. You want to tell them about that?
Yeah, I went up in the helicopter to look at the damage from the tornado, and, I mean, we found damage in Lollipop we didn't even know because of that. And really, we were able to, I guess, get our resources to where the issues were that we couldn't see from the ground and kind of laid everything out. And then I walked around with the National Weather Service when they was doing the storm, the damage assessment to try to figure out what it was and showed them around. So, yeah, everybody coming together. It really, as far as disasters go and tornadoes, I hate to say we're getting good at them, but it really, from my perspective, it went smooth on our end. I mean, we, we had a few hiccups here and there that we'll talk about in hot wash and try to get better, but I feel like it went great. Sheriff's Department did a great job, responded quickly. And, you know, there'll be some things that will come to the court, wanting the court's help with to change things to make them a little bit better next time. But all in all, I think it went great.
Well, Deon Steinseifer, TDM, our district, disaster district coordinator, gave high praise to the whole, the whole incident. She thought it was fantastic watching the coordination between the Sheriff's Department and emergency management using deputies to do the, the I-STATs, doing, doing the assessments and things was absolutely fantastic. And she really wanted to say thank you for that because TDM is hungry for all of that information because of meeting thresholds and reimbursement levels.
TDM's trying to meet their own threshold as well.
Yeah. So, anything else anybody want to vent? We got a good bunch of folks, and we're blessed in many ways that we often forget about. So with that, if there's no further discussions or comments, we'll entertain a motion. If you would, please add the number of days that you'd like to have in the declaration.
I make a motion to extend the declaration of, emergency declarations for 30 days.
I'll say the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to extend the local disaster declaration by another third, or by additional 30 days. Is there any further discussion?
Would that be from today?
It would be from today. If we did have need to go further, we would, we would be sure to have that on the court prior to the...
Before it runs out.
Yeah, the Tuesday before it runs out. So, any, any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right. Item number two is consider and discuss matters related to coronavirus state and local recovery funds, otherwise known as ARPA. And Danielle, if you would, our, just kind of our rundown on what's happening?
So I'll start off with H-VAC. It's been about three weeks since we've come to the workshop. So what's happened? They are finishing up this project. What's your preference? Should we go the way you go back from three weeks ago, or just up to date?
Just bring everybody, everybody up to date.
Okay.
Wherever you want to start.
All right. So prior to three weeks ago, the dampers in all three areas have not been wired in, but as of now, they have, well, they're past, but there is an issue with the valves. We went over that yesterday, and there's still, the valves are still chipping backwards, but there's, on to fixing that. We have iPad ordered. We have scheduled training tentatively for next, the second week of June, probably on the 13th, I believe. Our building is still on a 24 schedule. We will adjust that accordingly. The duct that was still not tied in one location has now been tied in. They did do the testing, the air balance, and they're still continuing to work on that in some areas. The fire alarm system issues have now been fixed.
On the discussion about those valves in the boiler, what it was, was that they've got it, it's been operated, it's been tested, it just has not been brought up to heat yet, which they plan on doing during off hours. They can do it remotely, and they'll, they'll bring it up to temperature, and they will adjust what is happening with the water valves through the system at that time. It's something that we had concerns about because, you know, whenever we hear, oh, we can handle it with software, it's like, yeah, okay. Sure enough, there'll be another issue, but...
What is the, she ordered an iPad?
It's for...
Does it run off an iPad?
The system can, can be accessed from an iPad.
Who, who will be in control of that?
That, that will be, be maintenance. What we are going to do with this training is we are going to have multiple individuals involved in this, somebody from IT, myself. I'm going to sit through the training on how to handle the building. Of course, maintenance will be there. And the hope is, and they're supposed to find out for us, is that if there is an app that can be put on the phone, right now, it's a direct IP address that takes you to it, that is firewallled off and all taken care of. But that way, we can just, like over at the jail, there is the app that we have for that system where if you've got the app, you can work from anywhere to adjust over there. But at this point in time... But at this point in time, they're, they are wrapping up. They did submit us a, a voucher for payment, which we have not, um, moved forward on until the punch list was worked out. Because there were, like I said, there were three, there were three dampers that hadn't been wired. There was one vent that had not been hooked up. Uh, we had the issue over here in the county clerk's office. There was a, a loose wire and they went about ten days without any AC in this big part right here. Got that squared away. Um, what else?
The duct work with other coppers still needs to be done.
Yes, that, that duct work, they reattached yesterday. So, um.
Have they gone around and, and counted the tiles?
That's in process. Uh, we, we asked them about that yesterday. The ASBILs, which will, there's, was some changes from what they had designed. The VAVs, where all the heating and cooling takes place, were moved out of the overheads in the offices to the hallways. So that in the event of maintenance or anything, it doesn't interfere with what's going on in the offices. That is not shown on the original plans. So, um, once they get the punch list knocked out, we'll process the pay, the, um, invoice request, payment request, and then what will remain is the retainage. And that should have HVAC wrapped up for this project. Questions on HVAC? The building is more comfortable nowadays. It is operating on twenty-four seven and we chose to leave it on that until we got the training. So then we can bring it down to, to what we, what we need because it's going to.
I know it's all, not, not all hooked up yet. Uh, have we seen any difference on the efficiency?
Haven't even looked, you know.
Probably be hard to tell now with, in, you know, everything open.
Yeah. Um, we, we haven't had the visibility as yet on this building for efficiency as what we're tracking on the, the jail. You know, with the McKinstry project at the jail, we're actively tracking it. But, uh, it's complete and operational and this one still isn't quite there yet. So. Anything else on this building? Hey, Danny? What else you got?
So the city company, um, we met with the architect firm and they think the whole renovation project will be around a hundred dollars a square foot. Total into it, he goes to be about, sorry, a hundred thousand in total cost, um, the generator being another eighty-five thousand. And fencing, which would be about fifty thousand as well. Um, and we went over a second set of plans to do a additional building with the remaining funds. And we went over those plans this Wednesday. So we will still get an office, spaces, a trading room, a trading kitchen for the ad life. Um, I don't remember getting a price on that.
No, he, uh, we went over the renovation of the, the, uh, existing building, putting everything that we want in that building. It, it would be, uh, complete refurbished inside, new tiles, new floor, redo the bathrooms, which they already had done for the new build, you know, what we were going to in the beginning. And then add the generator, uh, do the parking, except leave the improved parking that is there, the concrete that is there. But where we have the recycled asphalt and oil sand and everything else, whatever we've had left over has been dumped there. Is asphalt that and then put a new fence up. And that's what the, the price is supposed to reflect when he gets that back to us. And then, uh, on the office building, be a separate building. And he had it, uh, setting where we was going to set the new addition, the new civic center.
To the north.
To the north. We suggested that we move it around, uh, to the, I guess, the southeast side.
Where Howard's office was.
Before, before we was going, where Howard's office used to be, the old, uh, the old building, then we moved down there for Howard. And it will be a wood, a stick building instead of all metal. It'll be stick with, with a metal roof. And it cut it down to thirty, it was thirty-five or thirty-six hundred square foot inside the old building. The offices were outside with a new building, it'd be about thirty-two hundred square foot. Uh, you'll have four offices, reception area, four offices with storage. Reception area, uh, a meeting area for up to about twenty people. A coffee room and, uh, a teaching kitchen hooked to that twenty-part people, people meeting area. And, uh, a coffee room and a pretty good sized storage area where you could store tables and everything else. They have a lot of stuff that they have stored. They got rooms full everywhere up here. But anyway, they're going to get a surprise on that. We've got it bid out in two separate bids or whenever we decide.
Right.
Whenever he brings it back. It'll be two separate bids. We'll bid the renovation, which I think we probably know we can afford. And then if we've got enough, we'll bid the building. But that way we don't get caught up and it come back too high. And then we got to give all the money back to something else. So we'll have two separate buildings and we can decide if we want to just renovate or if we want to build the building and build, I mean, renovate the building and build the office building. And it may come back, we're, I think we're going to be able to afford to renovate. I mean, we've got two point four million. But we may not be able to, it may come out again as being two point six. And my opinion is we don't add nothing to the two point four.
Thoughts, thoughts on the civic?
And hey, and would you give, do you have all those dates of when it, so, so the judge and the rest of us will know, uh, one, Mark and myself are on the committee, but so everybody else would know the dates that, that we're looking at. Cause it's cutting it.
We've got a sample of taking this to court on June twenty-fifth, um, and then to advertise. Uh, Justin's still suggesting that we do a broad advertisement if they get in this time. Uh, we'll open the bids on July thirtieth and with the anticipation to award on August sixth.
Next week, um, we'll have on the agenda, because we did put out the current bid that is, that has had responses to. We will have to take action on that one next Tuesday. So, and then the rest of this process can begin based off what we do Tuesday.
So if everything stays in line, hopefully, I'm sure we're going to get off a week here, a week there between here and August. But we're hoping by mid-August, we'll have, we'll be ready, you know, we'll have, be ready for contract.
Ms. Mont, you had some training yesterday and they were talking about ARPA. And this is usually where we bring Wesley into the discussion about as long as we get it under contract bef- before December thirty-first, we're there. And then it's the two more years for expenditure.
They said even if it's a contract for road materials and you haven't even issued POs on it, so if you haven't, if that's a contract, we're good.
So.
And under, uh, under contract for road materials, what's that mean? Do we have the bid?
We have, we have a bid, we have the bid, yes.
So it's not like you just need to start issuing POs and get all that done by December thirty-first. You just have to have a contract in place, obligating the funds for certain.
We've pretty much already done that, haven't we? We've already obligated it.
Yes. We, we've met the thresholds for it. And that, that was part of the reason why through the budget process, we, we made a separate fund so that it can be delineated to them.
You know, right now our budget, we just pull in, um, um, and our revenues is we're using it on the budget. We also recommended that we go ahead and budget those funds for next year, uh, during our budget. Just get everything obligated through the budget and through the contract.
Okay, on, uh, so if we, so if we fall back, if we fall apart for a week or two, as long as we're in the mid to, to late August, to get all this in, we're good. But that's it.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we don't, if we don't get what we want in August, that two point four million is going to have to go somewhere else because there won't be enough time to get everything back in by December. So, I mean, this is our last chance on what we're going to do with the civic building, senior citizens. This, this will be our last shot.
Okay. Anything else concerning civic seniors?
Yeah, when you said, um, the hundred dollars a square foot, was that the renovation or was that the new building?
That was the renovation.
The new building probably is what, a thirty-three hundred square foot government building. I'm thinking, you know, upwards of three hundred square foot. So about a million dollars. So thirty-two hundred, you're looking at a million. So it all depends on what the renovation is going to cost us. You know, you're adding eighty-five thousand dollars to it with a generator. You know, the fence is fifty thousand, but the, the, the parking lot probably, I don't know. What do you think that parking lot is? Hundred thousand? Maybe not. Two, two fifty of just that stuff before you ever start on, on the building. But at a hundred dollar square foot, that building is, uh,
How big is that building?
Eighty-five, that building is eighty by four, uh, eighty-five by forty-five?
Thirty-six hundred. Yeah, yeah, about thirty-six hundred is what the current building is.
So that, if it, if it was a hundred dollars a square foot, there's three hundred sixty thousand. So we'd come in under. And, and maybe have some left to move somewhere else, but.
It, it has been, this one project has been the one, all the rest of them have worked really well. You know, that, that had been a part of the ARPA program. This one has been difficult because of inflation, all of the different things that goes on, lack of individuals wanting to bid on it. It's, I would, I would have thought the broadband stuff would have been the hardest, but this one has been the most, uh, complicated, shall we say. Anything else on the civic? Okay. Uh, what else?
For road infrastructure, uh, the bits were open on the twenty-first and we'll take it before on June fourth.
Okay.
For the water supply, um, got an update and if there's been the end of the preliminary design for round two, it should be ready for review shortly for the court. And at the time that we review it, they're going to move into final design for round one and two. And then find, and they projected that to be completed by July.
And once that final design is completed in July, then it will be able to go out for bid and get us moving on that. By putting them all together, they'll, it may get us some, um, economy of scale. But, uh, we're also bumping the deadline on this one as well. And, um, honestly, this is the one, we have four point eight million, I think, allocated of ARPA funds for water supply. And, uh, that is, that is the largest single project we've got as far as monetary and impact.
I got, I got one question on the road material and if we don't get it done, we got to be on a contract, you say. So bids are out, we'll approve or disapprove, we'll look at them to, uh, Tuesday. If we don't get it done, we, we'll have to rebid next year. So what, what, how's that work?
That's a good, that is going to be Wesley question.
Cause I mean, we, all of us might not spend all, use all of our offer money till twenty-five or twenty-six, but we got to rebid every year.
Well, one of the things that will help for us with that is having, as she, as she stated, they're recommending a separate budget where we have the funding allocated to help back that up. We, it, I agree the concern over the two bids, you know, crossing years. But we'll need to, it's something I believe that we can, can do. It's just going to dot all the i's and cross the t's for it.
Man, who'd ever thought it'd be hard, so hard to spend money?
That it is. That it is, especially meeting these deadlines. But with the, you got anything else? Okay, we are waiting for the, um, we should be getting an update the end of next month from Routh Speed on the broadband expansion, the two point three million of ARPA that's going toward that. Uh, we should have their update middle of June. We're already locked in, the contract, all of that. We're good. So, um, and again, that portion of it was supposed to, should complete, uh, I think, third quarter of twenty-five. So we're wrapping that one up. That was two point three, two point four million. The software, the financial software is moving forward. It's wearing audit out, but, um, it's continuing that, that portion of it. Those are really the only ones that are left hanging. We completed the hospital, the Rook and the others, so. Questions, thoughts? Well, if there, there are none, we'll, uh, wrap this up. Thank y'all for coming in. Um, thank you to everyone that has responded during this, uh, these weather events because we're not through yet. Hopefully we're through with tornadoes, but we're still going to have our storms. You can't be this wet and not have pop-up storms. So. If there's nothing further than we'll move to item three, which is consider and take action to adjourn. Have a motion from Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at ten forty-six. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you for being with us today.